We're going to call to order the November 17th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council and Redevelopment Agency and the West Sacramento Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance. We'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge. Tonight, the pledge will be led and the flags will be brought in by the Wee Blow's Cub Scout. And the leader of the Wee Blow's this evening that will be doing the pledge is Caleb.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Scouts at ease. Color guard dismissed.
Well, thank you to the Cub Scout troops and the Wee Blow's. We very much appreciate coming this evening and leading us in the color in the presentation and the pledge. Thanks to you, Caleb, for leading it and for the entire troop for being here this evening. But the rest won't be as fun. The council did not meet in closed session this evening, so we're going to proceed directly to our general administration agenda, which is Item 1A, Presentations by the Public on Matters Not on the Agenda but Within the Jurisdiction of the City Council. This is an opportunity for a public forum on matters that are within the city council's jurisdiction, but according to state law, we're not allowed to take action on them or to have any other discussion. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available at the front door and turn it into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone has the chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Those who recognize that for some folks, speaking in public can cause some amount of anxiety and hives, and we don't like, we would prefer that that not occur, so we ask that there not be any boos or cat calls or applause or other demonstrations, and that we maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, which currently displays number one, and the flip chart simply indicates which item on our agenda the council is currently considering. So with that, we have a few requests to speak under Item 1A, and the first is by Christina Tilson and Greg Rodriguez.
Hello. I am Christina Tilson. This is my fiancé.
Greg Rodriguez.
We are trying to open up Victory Ink Tattoo in West Sacramento on Jefferson Boulevard. We have a conditional use permit in the process right now. It will be seen on December 16th. We just kind of wanted to introduce ourselves. We know that really doesn't have to do with you guys. It's all Planning Division. We just want to put a face to a business. We do understand the stigma that has, along with tattoos. We want to be very community-based. It's also going to be an art gallery, so just kind of further along the art community in West Sac. We want to do, you know, things for schools, art for schools, do fundraisers, things like that, anything we can to just kind of be a part of West Sac. We're both born and raised here. Our families are from here, graduated from River City High School, so on and so forth, so we like to bring our business, our livelihood, and our passion to West Sac. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there a stigma associated with tattoos? Because I might be in trouble. I'm Mayor Portemblaigus.
Well, no, it's just interesting. Thank you very much for coming out. I mean, this is a perfect example of what I think we're looking for in our community. I mean, you were raised here, you went to school here, and now you're bringing a business here, and we all know that the small business is what's going to drive our economy back on track, and so putting a face with the business is very important, so thank you very much for coming out.
All right, thank you. Mike Fangzhu?
Thank you, Mayor, and the members of the city council. For the record, my name's Mike Fangzhu, resident of the city of West Sacramento. After moving to, into our home on Easter of this year, my wife and I have lived eight wonderful months in the city. So tonight, in this presentation by the public segment of the meeting, I'd like to say a few thanks. First, I'd like to thank the city. The city is situated at a magnificent place. On the one side, there's a great Pacific Ocean. On the other side, there's this beautiful Sierra Mountain. The city is just a few walking steps from the capital of the state of California and a short jog from the open space of the rich farmland of our golden state. Second, I'd like to thank the wonderful folks working at the city. Their dedication to serving the community has made our moving to and living in the city very comfortable. Third, I'd like to thank the city for its outreach efforts. The city's website is very informative. The city's blog highlights is very useful, and every day, I check the city's calendar for events to participate. Since April, I went on the California Fuel Cell Partnership Public Tour, attended the West Sacramento Police Community Meeting. I visited Fire Station 45 at its open house. I have participated in many events, and I'm looking forward to greater participation in civic life. In closing, I'd like to thank, I'd like to wish everyone here and the folks watching on the cable and web a very happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you very much. Welcome to the city. We're glad to have you here and glad to have you so engaged in the community and in civic life. That was great. Thank you. All right, Bill Lowell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, William Lowell, West Sacramento, for the record. At our last meeting, it was my understanding that was this, this was the last meeting for Councilman Wes Beers, and so maybe you have something more formal later on, but just in case, I would like to take this opportunity to thank him for his several years of service and not only on the city council, but in other ways, and as well as the assistance and friendliness of his wife as well. And it doesn't mean you have to stay away from here just because you're no, you won't no, you will no longer be in that seat. You can still come and mix it up with the rest of us. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Bill. One of my biggest regrets will always be that I couldn't help get a hometown buffet here.
You still have another couple hours.
Yeah, maybe in the next couple hours, we'll see what you can do. Thank you, though, Bill. Thank you very much.
All right, those are all the requests we have to speak under Item 1A. Item 1B is Council Communications. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Mr. Beers?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just actually wanted to alert you on all of the council assignments that I'm at. Everything is pretty much going its normal course. However, the Yolo County Habitat, JPA, on December 13th is going to be having some policy discussions about the Habitat Conservation Plan, and I would encourage you to have, make an appointment to that as early as possible. The plan, I had them agree that they would try to meet with our planning staff and also with the city manager prior to that meeting so that, you know, the city's input, but that would be a good meeting to be sure you could have your next appointment, too. Other than that, everything else seems to be in good shape.
No other reports or communications? So the intention is to make the assignments on December 1st, and so we'll just ask members of the council, either through a formal spreadsheet, or if you're Mr. Kristof, rip the page out of the agenda, scroll on a couple of ones, what your priority assignments would be for the coming, for the coming term on the various commissions and two-by-twos and other eight entities that we serve on. It's helpful if you identify which ones you would like and which ones you'd be willing. And I see Councilmember-elect Ledesma is here as well, so I'm assuming he's working also on the same, on the same stuff. So the sooner, the sooner you've got it, then we can make sure that we make those assignments on December 1st. All right. Once these appointments to boards and commissions, we have none of those this evening for, just a reminder for members of the public, we are, for the appointment term for city boards and commissions for the 2011-2012 term, we're asking that all applications be submitted by November 30th of this year, so just after Thanksgiving, and then the, those applications will go to the council. Members and individual members of the council may be scheduling interviews or not during the first couple of weeks of December. With that, our expectation is that council nominations would be to meet by the latter part of December, and then appointments would be made for the council's consideration at the beginning, at the beginning of January, so that the commissions would have their full complement of members and be able to begin their business and elect their officers at the end of January and the beginning of February. And the applications are available at the city clerk's office or online. All right, that brings us to our consent agenda, which is Items 2 through 8. Any items on consent to remove, or any item for separate? Number four. All right, item, and we have requests for public comment on item 5. Item 4 is Consideration of Award of Contract to Del Rio Advisors LLC for Financial Advisory Services. Mr. Beers?
Yeah, actually, my question, I know it's a master contract, but the report asks us to approve a contract with modifications. We didn't, I don't think we got the contract. We just got the syllabus from, from the bidder, so I don't know what the, we don't have the contract to look at.
If I could, no, the contract was, was not attached to staff report, and that's probably an omission of staff. It's a standard, it's the city's standard contract, it would run for a three-year period, doesn't really have a scope of work or budget attached to it at this time. That would be amended for each project which Del Rio Advisors was selected to assist the city with, with a financing issue.
Well, I'll tell you the, I can personally accept that, but the part on this one that I was most interested in would be the conflict of interest section, because a financial advisor, while, while it appears that this particular financial company doesn't issue stocks or bonds or whatever, that, that was just one area that I thought we should be very careful of in this kind of a contract, and so it would have been helpful for me to see what it is. But at this juncture in my illustrious city career, I'll defer to the rest of the council, but that was the point that I wanted to make on this.
Wouldn't you like to have a special meeting, a special meeting on November 30th to consider this?
You can throw it onto the December 1st 6:30 agenda if you want it. No, I, like I say, I wanted to raise the issue because I didn't see the contract, but it's up to you guys.
Other questions or comments on 4? Okay, item 5 is Consideration of Second Reading and Adoption of Ordinance 10-14, Amending Chapter 8.16 of the Municipal Code to Add Provisions for the Prohibition of Smoking at Public Transportation Stops. We do have one request for public comment on this item. It's by Mr. Lowell.
No, I took it back. I'll put my. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, William Lowell, again, of West Sacramento, and I was just going to try to get some idea when we might see some signage at the, at the, at the bus stops indicating that same message. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowell. Mr. Ross?
We have designed the signs, and they're being prepared. The ordinance, in fact, if you take the action this evening, won't go into effect for 30 days, and we hope to have the signs in place by the time it goes into effect.
All right, thank you. All right, that's all we have on consented, then. Is there any other questions or comments? A motion by Mr. Beers, seconded by Mr. Johannesen. Sign no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none, that motion carries unanimously. Consent agenda is adopted. Item 9 is a public hearing and consideration of first reading of Ordinance 10-15, amending Chapter 15.12 and repealing and reenacting Chapter 15.14 of the Municipal Code to adopt by reference the 2010 California Building Standards Code with local amendments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here this evening with the city of West Sacramento's Fire Marshal, Jason Rizzi, to discuss 2010 fire code adoption and updates. Mr. Rizzi will discuss the California Fire Code adoption during his presentation to On a three-year or triennial cycle, the California Building Standards Commission revises updates and publishes new fire and building codes. The 2010 California Building Code includes two new parts, the California Residential Code and the Green Building Standards Code. Council previously adopted the Green Building Standards Code. The residential code provisions were embedded in past codes. The residential provisions are now separated for clarity and ease of use. The 2009 International Property Maintenance Code is not included in this update because of conflict and redundancy with Title 19, nuisance abatement of the city's municipal code. Staff will return with a discussion and suggested revisions to Title 19 at a future council meeting. I will now turn it over to Mr. Rizzi. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. At a previous council meeting, I did present a, an ordinance 15.14 of the municipal code. Since that meeting, we have combined the building and the fire code adoptive ordinance because they are both components of Title 24, and that was for ease. All these sections would be combined in one adoptive ordinance that would reference both the building and the fire codes. As previously stated, the largest change for this triennial cycle is the state's adoption of residential fire sprinklers. Our ordinance that we are presenting to you tonight, in terms of the fire code portions, mirrors the previous 0721 with changes only in format and numbering. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions you may have on, on any specific items.
Are there questions for staff at this time? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing on item 9. We have no requests to speak, but since this is a public hearing, does anyone wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, return to the council. Further question or discussion? Or Mr. Beers moves? Mayor Portemblaigus seconds that the item be adopted. Sign no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none, that motion carries. Item 10 is a workshop on the Mobile Home Park Nonprofit Ownership Feasibility Study.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. And members of the city council, I'm going to provide a brief workshop on the nonprofit Mobile Home Park feasibility study this evening. This study represents perhaps the last component of the Mobile Home Park Strategy, which was adopted by the city council in, in 2008, many of which, many of the items have been already approved by you and have been moved into an implementation phase. What we see in terms of strategy actions, there was a change of use closure ordinance, which was adopted in November. This particular ordinance provides additional protections to mobile home park residents when a park owner is seeking to close a park. It provides six months notification of a park closure, requires an impact report, as well as if the unit cannot be transported, requires that the owner look at fair market value of that unit for it to remain in the park. And then, under the Mobile Home Park Improvement Program, there was a, a number of different aspects of this which were passed simultaneously. They include the operation standards, which all the park owners have, have seen, and it's all been presented to them, the long-term leases, as well as it linked the Mobile Home Park Improvement Program, for which we were funded, to the Mobile Home Park, to the operating standards and long-term leases. All of that has been presented to Mobile Home Park residents at varying times over the course of last year. I'm also happy to report that we've received a million dollars in Cal Home funding, 600,000 of which will be used for mobile home park replacements and/or rehabilitation. And I'm happy to also report that the majority of the large parks do offer long-term leases, and many residents, especially in the larger parks, are taking advantage of that. Lastly, one of the directions was also to see if there are other ways to provide affordable housing to some of the most impoverished residents. Parkside Apartments is providing, has provided seven units affordable to households at 30% of AMI, of area median income, and 10 units that are affordable to 45% of AMI, which is pretty much where rents are relative to mobile home park spaces throughout the city. This particular study looks at a number of different components. It looks at ownership models, the cost for acquisition and rehab, new park development. It considers what is the financing and what are some ways to finance acquisition and rehab or new park development, and concludes with a inclusionary housing analysis. This study is informed by both the housing condition and residence survey that was conducted in 2006, as well as case study information that was gathered by my colleague, Rick Toff. And let me just point out that Rick put in a, the lion's share of effort in this report, and I'm basically bringing it to you to carry it past the, past the goal line. So he's, he's really been instrumental in making the Mobile Home Park Strategy, the implementation of that come forward. There are essentially three different types of ownership. Generally, in West Sacramento, it's a very typical or standard model, where there's an owner, investor, or owner group, which rents spaces to tenants. Generally, for a conversion to nonprofit ownership, whether that's a resident-owned park, or whether there's a nonprofit housing developer-type-owned park, requires a couple of things. Normally, well, generally, it requires a willing seller and financing to go along with that. Almost, in most, in the majority of the cases, the conversions only happen when residents are somehow feeling like the management is very poor, or there are excessive rent increases. That's generally the, the thing that causes the transition or the conversion from a traditional or standard mobile home park to a resident-owned or other nonprofit ownership. Resident ownership takes a variety of forms. Sometimes it transfers land ownership to the park owners in a collective, and sometimes it takes more of a condominium look. Generally speaking, from our perspective, given the resident composition in our mobile home parks, nonprofit ownership by a, by a housing developer type would probably be most appropriate. That's generally predicated on the fact that many of the people, many of the residents living in mobile home parks would not have the way for all to try to pull together the equity to purchase a park. In addition to that, we do not have any willing sellers that we're aware of at this time. First, we also looked, the study looks at acquisition and rehabilitation of mobile home parks. Again, it borrows from the, from the Mobile Home Park Condition Survey. When we look at the overall costs involved, for a small park that's in fair condition, it would probably cost $2.3 million. That's probably a park of about 20 to, probably about 30 units exactly, or more or less, and up to $10 million for a large park in good condition. These costs are just considering the acquisition of the park itself. They do not include unit replacement. Rehabilitation costs would be included, but in some cases, we would probably, if there was an acquisition rehab project, would probably also require some unit replacement. Study also looks at new park development costs. This particular scenario is based on using some of the planning guidance, a five-acre park at 15 units to the acre, about 75 units. Minimally, we see that the cost of this would be about five, a little bit over $5,000, or $5 million, $5.5 million. If we look at some of the higher-end up costs, depending on, you know, what the price for land was, depending on what part of the city it is, those costs could go as high as $8 In order to develop an actual pro forma, to find out what is the analysis, what is the gap analysis, or what is the gap that would be required to purchase a park, the study looks at what is the minimum amount of cost relative to, or to operating a park. It looks both at rental parks as well as ownership. The ownership part differentiate is where the tenants of the space actually own the unit versus a rental park whereby the units are owned and by the park and are rented both as a space and dwelling in it. The rents that you see here are calculated to find out what is the minimal amount of rent that would have to be charged in order to cover operations costs. It does not consider, in this particular table, what the additional rent would be if it had to cover some debt service. To try to bring this into the affordable housing realm... To try to bring this into the affordable housing realm, this particular table analyzes or depicts what affordable rents would be for various income groups. So we see in the social security, you know, people receiving just SSI. We see what the rent's at 30% of median income for extremely low-income households, as well as very low-income households. In the first two scenarios, you can see that rent, if they are affordable rents, they would not even cover operating expenses in a park. However, once we get to very low income, it does provide money over operating expenses and would be able to cover some debt service. Generally speaking, in the, for the one-person household, that would, a space that is paying $200 over operating expenses would be able to support about $23,000 on a 25-year loan at 8% interest. So if we were going to go about, if there was a need to do an acquisition and rehabilitation or to purchase, or to build a new park, the study also looks at how that might be financed. What you can see is a, there's a list, and there's a description of a number of the affordable housing programs that the city tries to avail itself to for a number of affordable housing projects, including tax credits, the AHP program through the Federal Reserve, CDVG funds, and redevelopment funds. Our discussions with people who are in the industry indicate that conventional financing may be available for the purchase of a park or for the development of a park. Generally, that would have, if it's an acquisition, it would have to be a park in very good, in good or very good condition to be able to get 8% financing. The other thing to note is that would only, the loan-to-value is only about 40% that they are going to lend on a park. So in some ways, and I had the discussion with the broker, parks are almost treated as land. There's a huge amount of equity that has to be put in for that to happen. There is a dedicated program through the State Department of Housing and Community Development, the IMPROV program. However, it's limiting in that it only provides $2 million of funding, and it still has 3% simple interest. So while it may provide some of the funds, we'd still be looking at a very layered financing pro forma or approach to do acquisition rehab or new park development. Before the case studies, the study also looks at can mobile home parks be used for inclusionary They can, they have, as you saw from the case studies. There are some things to realize when, or to consider if we were going to, if the city was going to consider looking at mobile home parks to meet inclusionary housing needs. First, that the peculiar nature of mobile home parks, that is non-traditional in that there are space rents for the land, and then people then own the units on top, make it difficult to control pricing. This has been done, however, whereby owners say, "I'm going to buy into the park," or "I'm going to deed-restrict my, the resale of my unit." So this was done in Santa Cruz County, for instance. That's one way that it can be done. What else? If we are looking at meeting an inclusionary housing obligation, it's staff recommendation or the study's recommendation that a full-on rental mobile home park be the preferred model. For the reasons just talked about, that we can control rents both for the space as well as for the dwelling unit itself. In closing, there's a few things that just kind of, to me, kind of resound throughout the, through the study. Nonprofit housing model that is a housing developer-owned park is preferable to a resident-owned park, at least in West Sacramento, based on our resident demographic. Acquisition and rehabilitation is economically more feasible, more likely than new park development for a number of different reasons, but certainly our own costs, our land costs and our infrastructure costs weigh into that. West Sacramento currently has a lot of market-rate affordable housing through its mobile home parks. If we were going to try to ensure that people were only paying 30% of the income on housing, it would require some additional operational subsidies. And lastly, that if we were also going to look at mobile home parks meeting an inclusionary housing obligation, please be aware it's going to compete with other potential nonprofit housing developments within the city, whether that's through acquisition rehab or through new development. That concludes my discussion of the study this evening. I'm here for your questions.
Are there questions for Mr. Turkson? Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, Paul, are you planning on making a presentation to the Housing Development Corporation on this? Because I know they're looking at different ways to provide affordable housing in West Sacramento as well.
Certainly, I can. We did present through the, to the Housing Advisory Commission. But yeah, this is a study that we could certainly share with Mr. Clark or the whole organization.
All right, well, we're having a meeting tomorrow, so I can bring this up at that point.
Very well.
Mayor Portemvegas.
Thank you, Paul. This is very informative, and I just, as a general question, how, I mean, obviously, this came up since '06, when a lot of the work that I think was chaired by Councilmember Beers resulted in, and I think, a lot of the conversation around mobile homes, mobile home parks in West Sacramento, and some of the issues that the tenants were having with some of the landowners in terms of just escalating costs and the whole conversation of rent control, and a whole lot of misinformation was floating around in our community. And as a result, I think we took some bold steps to sort of bring everybody to the table, have a meaningful conversation about how we come to some reasonable conclusions about where we're headed. And I'm just curious, that was some time ago, and I'm wondering where we are now. Obviously, the housing situation all over has changed dramatically, and I'm just wondering where we are now. Because I know at one point, we were asking if we could get an update, you know, into the future as to how that agreement that we have with the owners, how it's working, and has it needed to be modified, or where are we at with that at the moment?
Sure. We did telephone a number of the parks prior to this meeting. What I can tell you is, average space rent now is about $400, a little bit over. We've seen that there have been some increases in rents in about six parks. The rent increase ranges from 1.2%, and that particular park is $5, to 4.8% at another park. We are seeing some varying degrees of vacancies throughout the parks. So, for instance, where we are putting the, doing the infrastructure project, they have a vacancy rate presently of about 12%. So there is some mobility that seems to be going on. Doing the residence survey, there still appears to be, there even may be doubling up going on inside mobile home parks. What else? So those are some of the upgrades. And some of them are proactive in terms of giving us information, and in some cases, we are a little bit more proactive in trying to find out whether or not rents are going up. But they do not, they appear to be staying fairly even keel. There's a number, one, two. Seven of the parks that were contacted have had no increase in rents for the last year.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you.
Mr. Beers.
Yeah, thank you, Paul, and Rick, too, really did a lot of great work on this. This was the last piece of the task force that was formed's job to do, and frankly, it stands on its own merit. It says what it says, and it can be used as a tool for consideration. My personal view on it was it really doesn't lend itself. This information, to me, doesn't support new parks. I think it always was about our existing housing stock, and I think some of the efforts that the council's already taken has gone a long way toward stabilizing the issues that were presented to us at one point in time. I really do think it's very encouraging that we just received the million-dollar Cal Home grant. I think with the structure that we put together and with the continued effort to try and get rehab monies for existing parks, that goes a long way to supporting our existing housing stock. My personal recommendation would be this report. The next time that we do have a serious need to look at inclusionary housing for various projects, that we ask staff to always consider a rehab-type approach to existing parks to see if that costs out, because again, it would be about supporting existing residents in their existing homes, and that if it were to cost out favorably, that would probably be a good thing for those particular homes. But again, I didn't even see a need to reconvene the task force, because this report simply isn't, is a portrayal of all of the different issues that would be involved in this particular direction. So, and I did ask that, Paul asked the task force members if they had any comments on the report, and they didn't. So I think the work that we did fundamentally has given new tools, and I think the opportunities we've given the parks to get some infrastructure money, or some of the residents to get rehab dollars, has gone a long way towards meeting some of the things. One of the things that always is amazing on these kinds of projects is communication was really one of the biggest barriers, not only between the residents and the park owners, but between the park owners and the city. It was, a lot of the issues were, you could talk through a lot of them. So anyway, that's my feedback on that.
Mr. Kristof.
Yeah, Paul, thank you, and thank Wes, and all of the folks that were involved, because, I mean, I think this report is what it is. And so it's going to be one of the tools that I think are in the toolbox, and, you know, if, I think Mr. Beas, I think, said it pretty well, that the economy really has also done some things as far as increases and all the other kinds of things. But I think the city's done some things, too. I mean, I think we've done some really positive things, you know, the grant monies, and, you know, it's not only for the park itself, but some of the rehab. I think those go a long way. I hope we can continue to look at it in that light rather than, you know, some other thing, because I do think that it points out that there probably won't be another park. I mean, it's just, you know, they're, they're, by the way, I mean, it's housing development or something else will take its place. So anyway, but I think that this was a good report, and I think it's something we'll probably have to use in the future, just to look at the data and look at the information that we have.
All right. All the comments, everything that needs to be said has been said, and please thank Rick. When I first read it, I thought, wow, this is a good consultant report. I wanted to see how much we spent for it, and then I realized it was an internal, completely internal product, and it's very well done, and really advances our knowledge about this work, so very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to council calendar. Ms. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there's a couple items on your calendar that aren't listed. On this Friday, from 8:00 to noon, here in the city council chambers, we're going to be hosting the Yolo County Pet Animal Welfare Society, their community-based workshop that's going to take place here. Anybody is welcome to attend that. And on the 24th, the Up for West Sac Executive Board meeting has been canceled. And then on Saturday, December 4th, the chamber is going to be hosting Santa's Breakfast at the New Community Center in the morning, and then the tree lighting will be the following Friday evening, also downtown.
Okay, any questions on the calendar? City manager report?
Yes, I wanted to alert the council to an application that has been filed for a cell tower in the Bridgeway Lakes, Southport area. I bring this to your attention because the proposal would locate it on the corner of the open space that's near Marshall Road. There are a couple of, two different approaches. One would be camouflaged as a tree, another would be camouflaged as a water tower. What I've done at this point is authorize them to file for a use permit. There's been no agreement as to actually selling the property. That would actually come back to the council for that action, but I wanted to alert you the fact that they will be processing a use permit for that.
All right, questions for the city manager? City attorney report?
Nothing to report.
Right, staff direction for members of the council? Mr. Beers?
I just didn't want to leave without asking for some direction here from, and this is actually just something that I believe in. One of the things that I don't think we give enough credit for in our community is the sacrifice that a lot of members of the community have made, and we have some opportunities to recognize some of these people as part of our current history. I mean, so the perfect example for me is the senior lounge in the senior, I might have missed some meetings where the discussion was going to be made on the name of that lounge, and I think Margaret McDowell has actually already been recognized in many ways. But Juanita Lopez was a champion of that issue, and I can still remember many meetings where she came forward and said, "I hope you guys build something before I'm gone." And we didn't, we weren't able to honor that, but I would really like to see the city consider naming that lounge after Juanita Lopez. So that's a specific request. I know that we have to have processes for these things, but you can't do anything to me after today anyway, so I can make whatever request I want. And on the same thing, and this is a newer issue, but how Pocito Park was named in my neighborhood was always a little bit of a mystery to me. It was actually a different name that was hijacked and given to a different park, and then somebody came up with Pocito, which is nice, it is a small park, but it actually has no relationship to that neighborhood. And if you haven't seen it lately, you really do need to go look at it, because community members have taken it over and turned it into a diamond in the rough. And I'd really like us to look at seeing if there is some way to rename that park to recognize either volunteerism or something that is more appropriate for that neighborhood. And again, it's like, part of the theme to me is, we are all coming together as a city in many ways, and we need to take a moment to recognize some of the individuals or groups that have accomplished that. And then that leads up to my final one, and that's the West Sacramento Community Center. And this last year, we lost a very important champion of our community, somebody who worked for decades in different capacities, serving in West Sacramento, and that's Ray Jones. And I'd really like to see the council or the community consider naming the community center after Ray Jones. So those are my final offers of direction.
All right. At this time, we would like to recognize and say thank you and goodbye, from this day us at least, to our longtime colleague, Mr. Beers. And we have a presentation, but I want to invite members of the council first, because I know members have a few words, at least, that they would like to say to you, Mr. Beers, before you rush out the door, make a motion to, a non-debatable motion to adjourn. And so let me call members, Mr. Johansson, would you like to lead us off?
Well, yeah, you know, being the newest member on council, at least for the next couple of weeks, I've really enjoyed working with you, Wes, and your perspective. You have, you know, a huge background in government work and how government operates. And I think what you've been able to bring to this council is really a pragmatism of what is possible, and, you know, what really is going to be the long slug to get it done. So I've really valued the, not only your experience on council and the discussion that you've been able to lead to a lot of the issues, but also personally, you're a good guy, and Jolena, you're both very good people, very well involved in the community. I really do look forward to, you're not going to be leaving anytime soon. I know you've got your little thing you do down south of the border. I know you've got your little thing you do down south of the border, but, you know, I'm going to look forward to you looking on a number of the issues, and particularly a lot of the volunteer issues and community-based issues I know that you both have been extensively involved in. So really appreciate it, it's an honor being on the council with you, and we'll be seeing you around.
Thank you.
Mr. Kristoff.
Yeah, Wes, we go back a little further than I think anybody else, but you've been a very good council member in both stints of your terms. And you bring a lot of, you bring a lot of energy and a lot of thought, and you bring a lot of, a different perspective, and I think that that is so healthy for all of us. Your priorities are so grounded as far as really wanting to help this community move forward and move to the next step. And, you know, in all the years that I've sat at this dais and sat with you in various meetings and things, I really respect your opinion, and I, the city of West Sacramento is better off, because you and your wife have been here and done the things that you've done. And just on a side note, I go to church just about every Sunday, and I pray for your granddaughter. She's been really, really inspirational thing around here, and I thank you for your service.
Mayor Paton Vegas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also wanted to thank you, Wes, and Jolaine. You really can't say one name without the other when you're talking about this community, and you guys really have provided a tremendous service, and you will continue to do that. I know, Wes, I have enjoyed working with you, goodness sakes, now 12, 13 years, and I know that you bring, your perspective is a very unique one, in that you bring very deep-rooted, very deep roots to the table, but you also bring great vision. I mean, you always have one eye on kind of where you've been, but you're always keeping another eye on kind of where we're going. And that's a unique perspective that you bring with your smarts and your sort of analytical perspective on all the issues. Every time I come to you with an issue, oftentimes it's, hey, Wes, have you thought about? And invariably, your answer is, yes, and here's why, and you've thought about, you're very analytical in your approach. Everything that I've ever brought to you is an issue or a question, you've always thought it through, you have sort of the pros, the cons, the ups, the downs, and I love getting your perspective. It's always very, very thoughtful. And, you know, we've had a lot happen in this community the last few years. I've had some very, very deep, very frank conversations with you, and I think that in part has led to, I believe, a lot of the success we've had in this community. We've had some very honest conversations about difficult, difficult issues in this community, and I've always respected your willingness to just tell me how it is, and that's, I've learned a lot from that. I've certainly appreciated, you know, all that you've, it's a tremendous amount of time being on the council for both you and Jolaine, and it's a lot of work that you've put in, and certainly, we're a much better city as a result of that. So I know there's, as Mark said, there's a special little place south of the border where there's Coronas and San for you guys waiting, so thanks again.
I think I first met Wes at a debate where I was running against you for city council, and I was amazed then at the vision, as has been said. But there's, I don't know, there's something that's, I think, really special about you and about your role in the city and the council, and Oscar's touched on this, but it's the blending of this huge ambition, right? You really believe that this city could be anything, and always encourage everybody to dream big and think high, and at the same time, as Bill said, very extremely pragmatic, and well, here's the path to get that done. And Wes is one of the, you know, city's success stories. He started out as a clerk at the Department of Benefit Payments, and then accountant or whatever, worked his way up in state government, like so many of our residents in the city, to run the foster care program for all of California, and then to become the head of the children's services branch, and led a lot of major policies in California that became national models for protecting and advancing the interests of children. And then he and Jolaine, together, have been really active in the elderly nutrition program here in the community, whether, so it's a beginning of life, and then the second half, starting in the 80s, in the 70s and 80s. Both have been such essential contributors, but I think in so many other places, there are people who have big vision and don't know how to get it done, or there are people who know the mechanics and don't know where they want to go. And Wes, you are one of those very rare individuals that gets it all, and is so authentic and personal in your approach to the community and your beliefs, that it's been a real pleasure personally to work with you and to enjoy the friendship with you and Jolaine through all the times, but also to just to be together on the journey. There would be no civic center, you know, this whole area downtown, you may not be here without the work that you've led on the overall civic center task force, and then on the individual projects, your work both in city government and through the Friends of the Library, on the library project, on the rec center, both as a council member and as its most loyal customer, on the mobile home issues that we just talked about, on the STIRS building and the waterfront, on insisting that we have meaningful transportation and transit plans in every development project that we do, the work that you did leading the Blue Ribbon for those few years that you, between city council terms, when you led the citywide effort on reforming the schools in our community, which have been one of our number-one challenges and opportunities, and that's thankless work. It always is, and you stepped up to it and produced an amazing set of recommendations, and our schools are dramatically different today as a result. So, I mean, there's a little bit of Wes Beers all over the city, and in every kid that graduates, and every homebound senior that has a hot lunch, I mean, you're everywhere, and most folks would not know it by looking at, you're not the Mike McGowan glad-handing politician. I mean, you are a different animal, and you get it done, and it's remarkable, and this community is so much better for it. We would not be where we are today without your leadership and your heart. And through all of this, like Mr. Kristoff, I think that both of you have served longer than, well, I think you and I have served at the same time, but you started, but you started earlier than me. And what I've appreciated about working with both of you so much is that neither of you ever say, you know, we tried that, that's never going to work, that problem can't be solved, look, we did that back in 1992, we thought we would try to solve whatever. It's never like that. You both have this incredible attention and knowledge to our history and to what we've tried and what we've attempted and what we've succeeded at, but you're always ready for the next one. And it's that unique blend of, as Oscar said, respecting our history and our heritage and where we've been, and also this incredible hunger for making it even better every day that has helped to make our community so much better. So I will miss you personally and on the council and in those rooms when you beat us up for not having enough outcome measures and metrics for our programs, you know, all those details that are, well, Oscar's not going to miss that part. You've been a real asset to the city, and you ought to, I know you and Jolaine are both proud of the work that you've done, and you ought to be, because it's, West Sacramento is a massively better place for the service that you've given to the community. And so I know this has been, as Mr. Kristoff said, this has been incredibly difficult last year in particular for you and Jolaine and the whole family, and, you know, so many other people would have just stepped away from the city, and you did it all. I mean, you and Jolaine, you would leave here sometimes at the end of a city council meeting, right when we adjourned, and drive to the Bay Area to be with your granddaughter, or you would arrive here one minute before we started the meeting as you were rushing up the highway, to be both the very best caring, loving grandfather you could be and father, and also be, continue to be an outstanding city councilman, and we're very lucky for that, and that takes incredible commitment and strength, and you demonstrated that in spades. So thank you, and best of luck. We do have a plaque, of course, that we'd like to present to Mr. Beers in recognition of your years of service as a city council member, but we also have, in addition to the plaque, a special little addition. I don't know if you recognize this.
Oh, my God. I need to clean that door out.
Can you see what this is from here? So the plaque is accompanied by a key, and it is a key to Goldie's, in which Mr. Beers, along with Mr. Kristoff, played no small role in removing and burning down from the city, and I don't know who it is in City Hall, Les Bowman, I'm going to get him right now. Les Bowman apparently had a key, a personal key, to Goldie's. You'll have to ask him how he got that. But we don't have a key to the old vacation inn and all the other things that you burned down, but Goldie's was really one of those that started your pyromania at the beginning, and it started it all. So we wanted to give you that key as one slightly more fun token of your service on the council, but thank you very much, and let me turn it over to you.
Well, thank you. Thank all of you. I wasn't really expecting anything tonight, and so I'm not really prepared, but I do want to take an opportunity to thank the public for all their support for me over the years. I can't go any further without thanking the remarkable city staff. You guys are amazing. You know, to me, the West Sacramento city government is something that should be taught to other communities, and I believe all of us on the council and previous people I've served with on the council have helped shape that. This has always been a labor of love. I would have never, in my wildest dreams growing up, have envisioned going down this road, but opportunity came to pass, and I believed in this community, and it's one of those things, I know some of our little Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts are very patiently sitting through this meeting tonight, probably because their parents are here, but, you know, that's the kind of thing about West Sacramento, is you either love it and you get involved, or get out of the way. And so people have stepped forward, and I didn't feel I could avoid that if I had issues. So I did, you know, make the commitment, and I really have no regrets. It's many times a thankless job. I've been in government for so long that I do get a little bit to the point where I look at lack of criticism as praise. But we've come a long way, and I actually feel good about this juncture of me stepping down, because I know there's a wave of issues ahead of you, but I really believe that West Sacramento should be proud that we have a strong government that can deal with these issues and keeps all of the pieces moving. And I can't tell you how proud I am of our downtown and of opening up the riverfront. You know, when we were forming a city, those were two key issues. I mean, when I first ran for office, I was meeting with people at different restaurants on West Capitol, and we were propositioned after leaving the meetings, and you don't find that problem now. And the river is now open to the community. In fact, the new section between Tower and Pioneer Bridge is, well, it's probably not open yet, but it's paved, and that is land that the public's never been able to get to unless you wanted to crawl over railroad tracks and down the levee. So we've come a long way, we have a lot of plans that are in the work, and I'm very comforted. One of the things that was important to me when I made the decision I wanted to step down was, were there people that were ready to step up? And I was very happy that Chris Ledesma made that decision, and Chris is more than qualified to come forward and be a new person that helps lead this community forward, and so that made my decision much easier, and thank you, Chris, and I wish you nothing but the best in your future. So thank you all again, and I will not fade totally into the sunset, and as you all know, who knows? You can't count on when you're going to come back, anyway, so. So anyway, I appreciate the kind thoughts, and I will be here.
Very good. All right. So you'll be back in six years, is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is you just can't predict yourself.
You never know. All right, we have no future agenda, I don't press, so Mr. Beers?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, hearing none. Motion carries, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.